Public hearing, proposed local law, our tax cap override. Need a motion to open a public hearing on that?
I'll move.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody have any questions on the local law on the tax cap? Okay, we'll leave that one open and move to the next one. Public hearing, sewer rate increase. Motion to open the public hearing on that one.
Motion to whom open the public hearing?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody have any questions on sewer rates? We'll leave those open and move on. Proven of minutes of the February 21st, 24th regular board meeting.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proven vouchers.
Vouchers, we've got general fund, forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, forty cents. Water fund, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, ninety-two cents. Sewer fund, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, eighteen cents. And capital fund, one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and eight cents. All those have been audited. I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers as read, and Joe might want to say.
The only thing I want to say on the sewer fund, uh, four hundred and twenty-some thousand, about twenty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, basically are bond payments. That's why the sewer fund is so high, paying back, it's, uh, we had the sewer on our sewer plant, we had sewer on our Five Streets project, and so that's making the bond payments. Capital fund, one of the reasons that's so high, we paid back, uh, one point four million dollars on one of our bonds. So that's why this, it was just to try and get that bond down sooner. We paid back one point four million.
And I made a motion to approve the vouchers as read.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unfinished business, uh, wastewater treatment phase one and two. Basically, there's just an amendment. Anybody got a copy of that? Basically, what that was, was on our phase two originally, our agreement with GYMO was for one million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, and then there was a net change of sixty-four thousand, eight eighty-seven. And now that the project's done, uh, there's going to be twenty thousand coming off of that. And so we're getting, uh, we're not going to have to pay GYMO that extra twenty thousand. Project's done, we're twenty thousand ahead of the game, so it's just, uh, an agreement saying that we're not going to be charged that other twenty thousand on our original agreement with GYMO. We're coming under twenty thousand under what our original agreement was.
I'll make the motion, Joe, to approve the amendment seven with GYMO.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Groundwater well development project phase one, you got anything on that map? We're still waiting on some equipment, right? Any of that one else?
For the, um, controls, yes. There's the stuff we added there a few months ago.
Groundwater well development project phase two. We've got two agreements. One agreement is with, uh, GYMO. Basically, they're going to handle everything with Jay Billings, our geologist up there, and they're going to have it, everything with a drilling company. And that's to start drilling two new test wells. And Matt may have some more information on it, but it looks like, uh, the drillers will be able to get up there in the first part of May, first week of May, and start doing the two test wells. Because we'd like to be able to develop two more groundwater wells up there. And, uh, the cost of that project is sixty-eight thousand, four hundred total. And we need a motion to, uh, sign that one.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have one other one under that new phase two, which we are municipal solutions. And our agreement with, this new agreement with them would be whatever work they have to do for us to keep this project moving, it'd be a hundred and sixty-five dollars amount. We need a motion to, uh, sign that, send it out.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have anything more you'd like to put on that?
No, I was going to tell you, May, May 6th is when the, uh, drillers will be on site for the test drilling. They're buying some material, getting it here, and they'll be ready to go on May 6th.
Street lighting LED conversion program. Last week, uh, New York Power Authorities, contractors were in the villages. They installed our last two new lights that were supposed to go in. I've been in contact with Jennifer at National Grids. She's put a work order in because now National Grids got to come out and, uh, energize those lights. I also contacted Ilya, the New York Power Authority, to find out when we were going to get our final invoice on this project. He said they're still in the process of putting them all together, so... And then, uh, I did talk with Mickey, he may have some information on it, but we look like we should be getting a third round of incentive payment coming down the road, right?
Yep, just waiting for, uh, uh, D O S had approved the N W B E exempt form for most parts of this.
And that would be the last incentive, so we've actually ended up, there'll be three incentives we've got for changing those lights over. We're going to be looking at, is it roughly sixty thousand this time?
Um, I'd have to check on that number, but yeah.
I was thinking it was roughly sixty thousand this incentive, and we've already received a twenty-one thousand incentive, a ninety-two thousand dollar incentive, so changing these lights over has been a good deal, plus we're getting cost savings every month. That's all I have on the LED, so many changes. You have anything on that, Tim?
No, nothing back from Matt at Tug Hill yet.
I'm sorry, Tim, wait a minute.
Nothing back from Matt yet.
Nothing at the moment. Hey, Tug Hill Roasters, should this be done, open session or exactly, or delay the contract?
It's open session. Basically, what this is, is, um, do you want them? Yeah, I think so, so, so real quick, obviously, Tug Lards and Roasters, everybody's familiar with them and their project here in the village, and it's an extremely expensive project. One really good aspect of that is the village is involved with what I understand is restoring the work around five grant. With that, the villagers receive the grant, uh, up to nine hundred thousand dollars to help make this project work. Now, in so doing, though, it's expensive, and the Tug Hill Artists and Roasters, it's that a lot of work they've got to do, is to get to that point, apparently, Tug Hill, uh, has contracted with, uh, Development for the North Country for a revolving line of credit of up to two hundred thousand dollars. They've also apparently contracted with, um, North Country Alliance, Local Development Corporation, for the second line of credit of up to two hundred thousand dollars. That's to get the process underway. What you've got in front of you are two proposed contracts. One that involves the village, Dank and Tug Hill, the other that involves the village, North Country Alliance and Tug Hill. And with it, what each agreement effectively does is says, look, you're going to be receiving grant money of up to nine hundred thousand dollars. It alerts you the fact that, that they have a line of credit with Tug Hill Artists and Roasters, and that what they're letting you know, that if something happens, that this process starts weighing, you get the nine hundred thousand dollars, that they can turn to you, and to the extent that you get the grant money, they can look to you and say, just, just pay up to that two hundred thousand dollars plus interest directly to Dank or North Country Alliance. That's all it does. It, it doesn't obligate you to make any payment other than through the money that you get in, in the, uh, Restore New York Grant. Now, in, in so doing, there's also language in the proposed agreement that, uh, they, that those entities defend and indemnify the village in case there's something unique. But I, I'd look at those agreements, view them, and approve them as the form. Now, what, what I have offered the board is a proposed resolution. And the resolution just memorializes that, includes those agreements, and, and if the majority of the board agrees, then what it does is it authorizes the mayor to execute those two agreements, one with Development for the North Country, the other with North Country Alliance. But that's, that's essentially it, Mr. Mayor.
And I got Jim involved on this because I kind of got blindsided on this. It was sent to my wife's email. Gentleman says, I'm the attorney for Scott.
So, so what had happened was, was when, uh, when the other lawyers reached out to the mayor and had the proposed agreements, she just wanted to protect the village, being ultra cautious, making sure that, that is, this is not something that obligates the village in any unusual way other than through a portion of the Restore New York Grants. And that, and that's all that it does. So he asked me to look at it, I did, I did go through it, I had been in contact with the attorney for, uh, Tug Hill Artists and Roasters. Um, and then I, I prepared the resolution because technically, if, if the mayor's going to sign it, he signs it because the board authorized him to sign it. But, but the, the village is safeguarded in the process, so the mayor's concerns were all founded, but it, it looks fine.
The board would like to move forward, we need, uh, somebody to, uh...
I'll make a motion, we draft this resolution.
I'll second it. You second it, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, myself, yes. Dan Salmon?
Yes.
Charlie Trillian?
Yes.
Tim Woodruff?
Yes.
Tony Anderson?
Yes.
And mayor, what that would mean then is, is when you can, to reach out to the attorney for Tug Hill Artists, because I think they've got a closing set for this Friday.
He would like to close Friday, I think, at two o'clock, I got a little trouble.
Yeah, so the time is real important to reach out, coordinate those efforts.
Tax cap override. Anybody have any more comments or anything on that? If not, I guess we would need a motion to, uh, close that public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close it.
Second. Second, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Basically, for everybody's information, the tax rate, we've worked on the budget, we'll be setting a public hearing for that tonight, but we are going to have to pass this tax cap override. And the reason behind that is with the reeval in the village, allow well in town, revaluation is putting our tax levy above the tax cap. So that's why we need, I think we're going to be like nine percent above than what we should be, but that's only because of the assessments, but, uh, so that's why we got to ride, override the tax cap levy. We need a motion to do that.
I'll move. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? But I will say that tax rate per thousand is going to stay the same as I said. There is no tax rate increase in Billy's taxes for twenty-four. Sewer rate increase. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, we need a motion to close that public hearing.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need a motion to pass that.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business, craft surcharges, water, February, none. Sewer, February, none. Brings it down to budget limits, general water and sewer. Anybody have any questions on those?
I will make a motion, Mayor, that they be amended as submitted for the general water and sewer.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Housing Authority Board appointment. Kathy Wallace, uh, is on the Housing Authority Board, and she's finding it necessary that she needs to resign at the moment. Carla Hellinger is willing to step in and fill out her term. So I'd like to point Carla Hellinger to finish out Kathy's term, which would run till March 31st of 2025. Anybody opposed on that? No problem there. All in favor?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve Kathy Hellinger through March, uh, 2025.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, we're on that subject, so, I just got this handed to me. Everybody's got copies, this is, we have a new, this is from the fire department. We have a new member, Chris Klotz, who lives here in the village, that we voted into membership at our March 24th members' meeting. We are submitting his name for village board approval, so we need a motion to, uh, accept Chris Klotz into the fire department.
As a liaison with the fire department, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, timber cut. What that's all about, and I don't know if Paul's got any information, uh, basically up at the watershed, we haven't done a timber cut up there in probably three years or a little more, so we're looking at to, uh, do another cut up there to control, keep everything in. You got any information on that?
Nope, I talked with the forester, got a forester coming up next week, and then, uh, chief water operator been walking through and taking work.
Who's that, who's the forester talking?
Uh, Tyler Scout.
Tyler?
Scout.
Related to Al?
Yes, son.
Son.
Okay, I didn't know who was that.
Okay, Veterans Park. We got a couple things on that. We need to, uh, Part One Seeker, which our engineers already put together for us. We need to declare the village as a lead agency.
And so, in a nutshell, I got, got an email, um, in connection with this particular aspect, Veterans Memorial Park improvements. New York State, I say all the time, doesn't make anything easy. Before you can do anything, even some improvements to your park, you've got to perform an environmental review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And, and so with that, there's a multi-step process. Um, you've been provided with the long form, uh, Part One E A F. There are a number of other agencies that are involved in the process, meaning there's some similarly perform environmental review unless. If you, if you choose to serve as lead agent for coordinated review under Seeker, and that all means is that if you, if you choose to do that, you can adopt a resolution, and I prepared that resolution and sent to the village, and if you adopt that resolution, we notify all of those other involved agencies. They have thirty days within which to approve, or to object, or waver. And to be honest, they always just, either, either they approve or they never respond. But, but after that thirty day window, then you can undertake the environmental review with Parts Two and Three, and it's only after that, the speaker is complete, that you can actually undertake a real determination with respect to the project. So what, what you've got is a relatively straightforward resolution that I prepared that, that lets you declare yourself as lead agent.
And then, once we do this, our engineers will send all the letters out.
They're supposed to, and, and if they, and, and I'll reach out to make sure that, that they, that they're aware of that, if they don't, then we, we can send the letters out. But yeah, there's a, there's a process. If you, if you adopt that resolution, then notification letters have to go out to all these other involved agencies, which will see them, the other agencies located on, uh, page two of, of the form, Part One near the top, you'll see about seven other agencies. They've all got to be contacted, they've all got to be given that thirty day courtesy window. But, but it's, it's a key step in the process. If you don't do that, then what happens is, is you're going to be held hostage, so to speak, while each of those agencies begin their process, and it might take them months before they get around to it. This way, you can kind of keep the process moving forward rather quickly.
Like on page thirteen, the village, we need to sign this, don't we, where it says certify that the information is provided, it's correct?
Yes. I, I don't, you see, and I, I did not prepare the Part One. The Part One, they, they prepared, we're all done with it.
One Part One is done, it just needs the signature.
You'd be signing that, that correctly, as a mayor.
It'll belong with this resolution.
Yes.
And another reason for doing all this is, all this information's got to go into Sunshine Jenkins, which is our contact with New York State Parks. And they have to have all this before they can do a contract with us for the five hundred thousand.
And, and I've received word from, from Sunshine Jenkins, they wanted us to review the title and to certify that the village has good title. We did that today, and, and, and offered the letter today, we emailed that today, and I've got a, I think, I think that's another copy you've written, the letter through your file? If not, which you've got, so, so you've got, okay, so you've got that step, but there's a lot of steps in the process. But, but from the board's perspective, if you would consider adopting that resolution to serve as lead agent for, for, for New York Seeker.
Do you have a motion to adopt that?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Myself, yes. Dan?
Yes.
On the resolution?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chuck?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Probably good to do in that tree cup in the watershed, because we're throwing a lot of trees with all this paper.
Okay, the twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget? We have the general fund budget, we have the sewer fund budget and the water fund budget. Everything's been put together. I know most board members haven't had too many days to get a chance to look it over, but, we need to schedule a public hearing on this budget. And Brittany, you'd this, uh, you'd be able to put this online, right? So people can go to our website and see it.
Yes.
Do we have to do it before April 17th, which is our next meeting, Mayor?
No, I'd like to...
Have a special meeting?
No, we got our organizational meeting April 3rd.
Right.
I'd like to schedule the public hearing for the budget on April 3rd.
Okay.
And then, if everything is smooth, we'll adopt it at our April 17th meeting. Because we need, uh, let me see here. We got to have the budget adopted by May first.
Yeah.
That's why we need to set those pretty, uh...
So, Mayor, I'll make the motion that four o'clock at our organizational meeting, we have the public hearing for the, uh, proposed budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I know we've been back and forth with this budget, but I know we took some stuff out, put some stuff in, that's been, well, Brittany's been baptism by fire, but hopefully, uh, we're actually better on the general fund this year in respect of, uh, just to give you a quick idea. Last year's budget, we had to use two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven out of reserves. This year, we're only going to have to use a hundred and thirty-one thousand, a hundred and twelve dollars out of reserves, so we, I think we're doing much better this year. So I think we're doing much better this year. Organizational meeting, we talked about that a little bit, that's going to be April third. Basically, that's just new committee members and everything. Anybody got any questions on that? Correspondents, Rico update, it's March twenty twenty-four. Everybody got any questions there? If not, we got the man right in front, we'll answer him. Do you have anything that you would like to say about?
I'll just say our next Rayco board meeting is going to be May thirtieth at six o'clock. It'll be at the town of Wilma. And then we have the Economic Visioning Summit coming up next Friday. That's going to have a coverage out, and that's a free event that Rayco will also cover in the lunch for any attendees. And that's open to anybody from the public to attend. Just, you just ask them to register so we can have kind of an account for a number of people. And then you've probably seen some things with the COG survey going around, so I heard it wasn't the easiest, but I, I already went through a few drafts of that, so I already have the harder ones. But basically, what that COG survey is through the University of Albany is that they're trying to look at how a council of governments function and what the benefits are to council of governments. And they want to be able to utilize that information to maybe say, you know, why isn't it being replicated in other parts of New York State and stuff? So they chose Rayco as the, I guess, guinea pig of that for the survey, so. Local government student activity, have reached out to Lewis County Youth Bureau, and they only have like four students right now, so I'm trying to find maybe another option, or maybe a few more students could be involved. So it might be reaching out to the schools or go see down there. Ford government intern, we're actually interviewing a Ford government intern tomorrow. And so he might be coming on board to work with us. And then on that, that's pretty much it. Other than I'll just mention that, I don't think I've already mentioned the Rayco board meeting in January. Paul Smith, the town supervisor for Wilma, he's now the chair for Rayco. And because Tim wouldn't take it, no. And the vice chair is Yvonne Bolger from Towne Crogan there. She's a board member there, so that's, we have there. And I'll just mention again, the local government conference coming up, May first and second at Turnstone Resort. And May first will be an infrastructure roundtable with grant funding and that type of thing, organizations from there. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Does everybody have the information on Lavo Fire Department, Sir Daniel McBankton?
I have a question on that, Joe. Is that the Saturday before spring break?
Uh, yes.
Done, okay.
I won't be very good, so. It should be a good meal though.
Where are you going?
Okay, Officer Community Report, is the village turning or anything different than what we've been talking about?
No, the only thing that, for those part reminded me a few minutes ago, so if you organizational meeting, if that's not a regularly scheduled meeting, please make sure before the end of the meeting, you set that at the date, time, and place. That was a good catch.
For the five.
Should be here April third, four o'clock.
She did want a motion to set that. Now, what you, what you could do to avoid the publication, the thing is, I thought we, you could make it, you could adjourn your meeting today, let's say at the end. You could adjourn it to, you know, May, or sorry, April third, whatever. You could adjourn it, and if you adjourn it in open session, then that will avoid the publication costs.
We're still going to have to do the publication.
Okay, if you have a public hearing at the end.
Then I don't do it.
I was thinking, let's do the, did our organizational meeting last year in twenty twenty-three, we scheduled this year. That's why I didn't set any dates. That's the way they've done it in the past, but.
But I think the safest thing is, is to go ahead and, is to set it. And I understand, yeah, that's going to be a public hearing anyway for your budget, so you will have to have the publication on that.
We have a motion to schedule a public, or organizational meeting for April third, twenty twenty-four?
Yes, I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Palm favor?
Aye.
Pose.
That's it.
Okay, I don't have anything, Bert Curry?
Uh, just the treasurer's report, everyone should have a copy of that for February, besides that.
Chief of Police?
Um, not much. Speed signs are out, right now we're on Ross Road and West Street. Next week, four of us are, four of us are going to active shooter training in Risky. And then next week in a snirt run, and we just left the meeting this afternoon. Stop DWI's in the cover. Overtime shifts for Friday and Saturday night here in the village, so we make sure we have the car out. And the new car should be here, it might be here today, might be there now. It's in transit, so that's all I have.
Superintendent?
Spring cleanup has begun with the nice weather, even though it's not really nice out. We actually got a jump start on a lot of stuff. We did purchase a bucket truck, which we've been, purchased a bucket truck to put up our Christmas lights and whatnot. We've struggled in the past trying to get one, and we thought it was a good idea.
Capital future planning.
Mayor, I have a list of the current DPW equipment, and I'm going to ask Paul that we get it to our board members. It lists the year and any type of equipment it is. And moving forward with Tony, I'd like to start a process of developing a spreadsheet as to when we're going to replace this. And then from there, we'll do a, I would like to do a comprehensive on, on infrastructure and what we need to plan on doing in the next five to ten years, which will be beyond my time as a board member. But I think that that way, if you want to plan for future grants and what have you, we can have something that we know we can refer to. So in the next few weeks, I'll work with Tony, and I'll get that going. I, tomorrow, if you would, I'll get this capital out to everybody. That's it, Mayor.
Paul and I would like to reset to the session on person out. Finance? Anything? News and Fire Department?
Yeah, we, the new fire truck, I guess, is in full service. They've had a few chicken barbecues and a few spaghetti dinners, and things seem to be doing well there. I'll give the floor to the fire chief.
The only thing I have, and this is for Joe or Paul, in the budget, is the front driveway getting looked at, or?
No, the roof is. No, we, we, we're talking the driveway too, but I mean, we did, there is money.
I know, I know we're putting in for money, but I mean, I don't know if that's guaranteed, so even if we don't get it, I think the front driveway really needs some more.
Our main concern this year was your roof.
Yeah.
So wanting to put money aside and bank move for you.
Joe, do you determine what we think is going to, or Paul would want to think, because what we figure is maybe a rough figure on what it's going to cost to do that driveway correctly because of the heavy equipment?
Probably anywhere from a hundred thousand to a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Won't be cheap.
Because you've got to, you've got to do drainage, you've got to basically dig everything up.
Did they put in for that grant that I was talking?
Yes, we put in for grant, I don't think the driveway was able to be on it though, because of the requirements for grant. I know we put in for the HVAC system and a couple other big ticket items, but.
They did must build like repairs and things.
Yeah, and I think they were going to try, but the reality is, the money the state gave is, it sounds like a lot. But when you add how many fire departments are in this state, I wouldn't be surprised, we don't see any of that money up here.
It was supposed to be up to a million dollars for like building repairs and stuff like that.
But then they only offered twenty million, so that's only twenty projects, so.
I think it was five, five hundred thousand yards new equipment on trucks and stuff.
We got to get that driveway fixed, and it's in top shape.
But we figured we got to attack it, especially that one spot where it's weak.
You don't fix the summer, the roofs and the things.
Police Department, anything?
No.
Planning Board and zoning Board, anything?
No meeting.
Municipal Board? County, anything?
Moral?
County?
I don't know if there's really a lot to report, Charlie and I attended last, the county meeting. I know that there's a few things that are coming up in the few next few days. I'll talk with legislator. North Sun knows the biggie, one of the biggies that we're heading to is Summer Rec. I think we've got to get moving on that, because I don't think there's been much happening. We've got to determine what we're going to be doing this year for Summer Rec. We will not have a pool, so now the question becomes, do we want to bus everything to Silver Falls? And have the swim in that pool and pay for transportation and what have you? I have my thoughts on that, but at this point in time, I'm going to, I'm going to hold on, on that until we discuss it more, but we've got to get going on that. That's off to the county.
Well, kind of along that line, Dan, on recreation, for your information, Tuesday night at seven o'clock, there's a meeting. I care. At Mike Young's office.
Can I go there?
You're welcome to come. At seven o'clock.
Is there any other board members going besides you? Okay, because we can't, I don't want to warn them there.
I invited Vinnie today, he's gone, and then there's been other town supervisors invited. Bob Mullin will be there, I think Brian Pichet will be there.
Okay.
To try and see which route we're going to go. And I have heard that the swim program part of it's in jeopardy because of the stuff the schools got going.
The, the way I understand it, the pool this summer at Lavo Academy will not be available because of capital improvements.
But something's got to, I mean, the program's gone from fifty-some thousand to sixty-five thousand last year. And this year, they're looking at, so that's why we've got to get things under control. This year, they're looking at over eighty-seven, five.
I think some fair questions need to be.
Can't continue with those numbers.
I would agree, we've got to ask questions. And we'll figure it out.
Rayco, we already discussed all that stuff? Public Count?
Mayor, before we start public count, it's, one of the constituents presented to us a recommendation from the co-enforcement, Ward Daley, about amending our law for fences and setbacks. And what I would like to do at this time is just suggest that we have Attorney Burrows look at it so we can move with it further, because I take seriously any recommendation that departments give us. And in reading this, I think it's a fair recommendation, I think you've all got a copy of it. It's highlighted the part that they want us to read, and I've looked at it tonight, and I think it's, it needs to be discussed. But I think this time, I'd like to have our attorney look at it, and we can move forward. If nobody has a problem. And I have talked to co-enforcement officer Daley on this, and this is, this is his recommendation. Did I, I didn't know this was coming, but I have discussed the issue with him. And this is his recommendation, that's what we hired him to do.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is this.
On existing fences?
There's, the way I understand it, you are not going to be able to do anything on existing fences because they, our grandfather has currently by code. This would be for future endeavors. Okay?
No, I don't have a problem with that.
No, I think, I think that's the best thing to do.
I just, okay.
Joe, I didn't share anything like that. You have one?
I do have.
Okay. Third place is that one on the hills? Yes. Okay, thank you. That's, that's all I have.
All right, now we're bringing up the public count. Carol?
Well, I'm bringing up again, like I did in January, especially about the property that we're talking about on the corner of Cascade and Stole Street. That, that area is really bad. And the thing is, is that a lot of people, you've got to pull out so far out in order to see. And then when you have law enforcement coming down, I've seen them, they're going like, oh, hell, something's going to happen, someone's going to serious again. We cannot allow this to continue. No, it's not your cars, it's the sheriff's office. And the thing is, is that something's got to be done. In my opinion, and I've talked to other neighbors, they said that whole hedge on the side of Cascade and Stole Street need to be torn down. And I know the owner of that, they'll say, we can only clip back so much. You've got, according to the law, we have, it's got to be twenty-four inches away from that sidewalk, and it's not, it's overgrown. And the hedges are way too tall. So aren't we supposed to, as a village, we have laws, aren't we supposed to enforce them? And also, think of the safety of the people here? Apparently not. It's been brought up before. Nothing's been done. So it's like, what of it? You all don't think of it, you just figure that you're on the board and that's it? You've got people that are concerned, and I hate to see anybody, and I'm myself.
I know.
And it's bad. And then also, another thing is, is that my neighbor next door to me, who put that fence up, and that's why I brought that up, for the fence and stuff, for you guys to look at it, for anybody's future. I'm telling you, someone's going to get hurt, and I'm going to be liable for it. And right now, what I do is, when I come out of my driveway, I honk my horn, and I know my neighbor's going to complain about that. But it ain't no different than you've got the backup alarms on the trucks. I'm just thinking about my safety. And that neighbor of mine is not even thinking of her own children's safety, because her children in the summertime, they go up and down. And I can't see, she's causing obstruction, there was never. And also, people are talking about it, like, what the heck happened here? And like I said, when she's got all them signs, those posted signs, my mother feels offended. And then, another thing, in the wintertime, we had problems with people not doing their sidewalks. I was brought up before about maybe we should hire somebody to look out and get these people. Because I'm going to tell you, I, don't, don't interfere, excuse me, sir, until I'm done, because I only got permission on the floor.
I'm going to tell you about the sidewalks. I've already addressed that with our new chief. And before, we used to have to send out letters to everybody, and it took like ten days or so. Now, if you call with a complaint on a neighbor, our police department will go there that day and give them twenty-four hours to get things corrected. And that's going to be the same way with grass this summer.
I hope so, and if that happens, and if hopefully that, and the people don't do it, is the village going to come? And I know the village gets very pounded, especially in the wintertime, if you, it's the safety for our, our roads and stuff. But I'm just saying, maybe we got to hire somebody to do sidewalks, because the superintendent is overloaded in the, in the wintertime. And we're just trying to think of the safety of the people. I myself, when I have to walk, sir, I have to walk out of the roadway.
Well, I'm just saying, those things are.
Well, I'm just saying, it's true, sir.
They're going to get acted on sooner.
Well, I hope so. I hope so. And then I got another thing, who's responsible in the wintertime, over by mains, that small bridge there? Who's supposed to clear that off?
We clear the bridge off.
Over by mains?
Correct.
Okay, because there's a few times that it wasn't. So I was just wanting to know about that. Also, our sidewalks, where they get the Five Street project and stuff. The thing is, is that sidewalks, where you see they're kind of dented in-like, and then they have the things for. things for people that are, it's called disability, for disabilities, so they can get on the sidewalk.
And accessible.
Who is responsible for that, to clear that off?
The homeowner.
The homeowner is?
If it's in front of their house.
You know for fact that is, sir?
I don't know for fact. It's always been, it's always been in the past.
But I'm just saying, now, because of the disability, they, when they put new sidewalks in any place, especially where those sidewalks are, where there's a crossing, it's called under the Disabilities Act, because people that are disabled, they should be able to, and if you see those little things on the ground, it's for people that are, that they can see, well, I can't see, and they have to have like a walking stick. So I just want to know who's liable for that? You know for sure that it's the landowner?
I'm just saying, in the past, it's always been.
But now with this, with the disabilities.
But I don't know for sure, no, I don't.
But I'm just saying, with the Disabilities Act, you've got to look into that, because someone's going to be liable if someone gets seriously hurt.
Mayor, would you look at the code to determine if it's the landowner or the village?
The code would probably be proof positive, but normally it's the adjoining or the abutting property owners responsible, that's a fairly common, common requirement in most communities.
Yeah, I was wondering, does the village of Lavo have complaint forms when somebody has a complaint? Do you all have complaint forms so people can fill out one?
Yeah.
You do? And you just get them right here at the office?
Double check with Wendy, but I thought they had them in the office.
Okay. Another thing is, is that when someone makes a complaint, especially, this is what happens, because I know you all were just talking about certified letter to get people and all this stuff and everything else. Well, you can do a complaint form, but you can do, after you get, a person's complaint, does a complaint form, you can do certified letter, not do a certified letter, sir. I mean, excuse me, you can give a, can be served by a personal service instead of wasting the time of doing certified letter. When like, right now, lawyers have gotten people to, or owe money or whatever, but it's to show that if anybody's got a complaint, and I know how you were saying, it was a certified letter and it takes time, and even the superintendent's tried and blah, 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 there's problems. You can have a person serve a letter. Because I've done it before for lawyers. What you can do is, you, there's three different times you do it, you got three chances. If the person does not there or nothing, what you do is, the third time, you stick it right on their door. This way you're not wasting any time. So I'm just trying to give you some ideas, suggestions, so you don't waste time going back and forth, back and forth, because I've done it before. And you don't waste no time. So I'm just saying, you're all saying about, you know, we got to send a certified letter and that takes a lot of time, but if you do it the way I'm telling suggesting you, and I'm pretty sure our attorney knows about that.
Yeah, CPLR 308, number four.
So I don't know if the board was aware of it, of suggestions to say, get funds or execute on it. But I like to see things matter to get things done, especially for that corner. We got to start thinking of that and other people that got a fencing. We have laws, sir, and all of you. If you don't want to enforce them, then amend them. Because the thing is, they're not being enforced.
As far as Carol's concerned about the hedges, I think that her concern about the hedges is, is very, very valid. And it seems like we talk and we talk and we talk about it. And something needs to be done, because coming off of Cascade on the stove, I don't care if you're making a left, I don't care if you're making a right. It's extremely dangerous. A question for the chief. How many accidents have we had on that corner? I know there was a couple before your time.
Well, not looking, I, there's been a couple. One that I remember since January 1, maybe two, I know there was one.
The last one I remember didn't have anything to do with the corner. The guy was watching the yard sale on the opposite side of the street.
That was, yeah, that was last summer, yeah.
That's lovely.
I, I'm sorry to say, but I'd like to see something done for the summer, I really would, because this is like, plus D, song, said it's been brought up, nothing's been done. And the way I'm looking at it, and my neighbors, they're getting really upset. And if I'm not, and some people got to pull out, it's not going to look good for the village, because you didn't want to do nothing about it.
Well, Carol, also, in fairness to the village, if what they do meets code, there's not much we can do. But I, I fail to believe, or it's hard for me to believe that the way those hedges are trimmed, that it meets code. And if they were my hedges, as a responsible neighbor, I would, I wouldn't worry about the code, I would just do it, because they are an extreme hazard. And I've had people call me on it, not just you.
Yeah, if I believe, if I remember, Dan, wasn't it, maybe two years ago, four maybe, that we had that person trim them back?
That person came to a village board meeting and made the statement, if we didn't like it, we should travel a different road. That to me, that to me is not being civic and community minded.
But they were trimmed back a few years ago.
They were trimmed back?
Were better, but they've grown out now, which is bad. I know the last time I was crossing the crosswalk.
The only way that those are going to be saved is for them to either tear them out or constantly be trimming them to, to work and.
I don't think possible, man.
What, tear them out?
Only a possible trim. I mean, I really don't think that's the answer, because the hazard's way overgrown, period.
The thing is, is I already heard from people that if, when they're overgrown like that, I've gone to a landscaper and they said, well, those, the way those are, they're so bad, they should have been kept up and they weren't. You can only trim them back so far, if you don't trim them up where they should be, you know, beyond that, they're going to kill them. So the only option, and, are my neighbors and myself, they need to pull them out. And I know that there is another problem, there was in Watertown, they had a problem with a neighbor that had, and they had to, they went, took them to court and they won, and they had to take the hedges out.
I disagree with you, I agree with you. We walk down there all the time, you can't even walk on a sidewalk. Two people, because there's no room.
Wasn't work working on that?
They've been trimmed, they've been trimmed three years ago, they were trimmed actually last year. But trimming, I don't believe is the answer, because they're too overgrown.
I already talked to a landscaper and they, they took a look and they said they're so, they're, they're way over. And that if the village is supposed to be, they said, he showed me how far they're supposed to be pulled back, says they're going to be damaged if you trim them way back where they're supposed to be.
So, Tim, being a former code officer, if they don't trim them to code, which is not a solution, but it's a way we can handle this, I'm assuming that it would be just like our sidewalk law and our, our lawn law, that we would be able to trim them ourselves and build them. And we could continually do that.
That's my whole point though, Dan. I don't think you can trim them to make them meet the requirement, because they're too overgrown.
Okay, here, here's a very blunt statement, then maybe they're going to die, I don't know.
To trim them to meet the requirement, you'd have to cut every branch off the side of that trunk.
I'd rather have shrubs down and have a kid getting a head killed. That's, that's about mine, so I think we've discussed that enough, we need to take action.
Because I already, like I said, I already talked to a landscaper and he looked at them and he said, these are actually, the situation that you had right there is, is an issue. He said, they would have to be pulled out. It's the only way, if you try to trim them back and everything else, you're going to kill them.
I agree.
Maybe that'll be the solution.
But we got to do something before the summer in my book, because this has gone long enough. And also, we've got a lot of people that got their, that one placed on that side too, on Stone Street, on the Cascade Ave. You can't walk on that sidewalk, they're heaved. And I know every, the board has told people, let's try to maintain the sidewalks. And you're always saying, please don't let our, the, our people in the community walk on the, in the roadway. I know you've been saying that, but we got to do something, these people are terrible. I mean, I mean, I commend the people that take care of their property and also take care of those sidewalks in the wintertime. I commend those. I really do, because those are the people that I have faith in, that they're going to say, hey, I'm watching out for you, but you got these other ones that don't care. Like, so how, how great that one of them did that and was on your property and fell, guess what? They can go after you quicker than you.
We understand, Carol, and we're going to have to just look into it. We might even have to have our attorney send them a letter.
Yeah.
But we got to move on. So does anybody else have any other public comment? If not, we need a motion for a second session.
I'll make a motion, we go into a mobile panel.
For personnel.
Discipline, negotiation.
Second. On favor? Aye.